Okay.
Thank you, John. Good evening. Welcome to City Council this evening. Before we get into our regular general meeting, we have to take care of other. These just happen to come up once in a while when we need to address some other issues. So first, we need to handle our Harriman City Fire Service Area Agenda. We'll try to get through these really fast. So, item 2.1 on this agenda, look for a motion for approval of minutes. Motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Jared. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I will note, Councilmember Orrin is with us on. She's from, she's in.
Sorry, we can't do it. There's actually a formal.
Oh.
Motion. Jackie was about to have a heart attack.
We're up.
We're good. I don't need to redo this?
No, you really should do it.
Okay.
We'll do it on the next one. We'll be better on the next one. We'll note that Councilmember Orrin is with us via phone tonight, so we do have all five of us here. On to item 3.1, consideration and approval of amendments to the fiscal year 2023. Kyle.
Thank you, Board. We just have a few amendments I have proposed for the Fire Service Area Budget. I've listed them out in table form, but I'll go through them really quickly. The first is, we had discussed at a prior work session meeting. I'm proposing moving the fire impact fees to their own funds, so they're separated from the operating funds. So, that's reducing revenue and then also using fund balance to transfer the prior amounts collected to that new fund. In addition, we hadn't budgeted interest income in this fund, so there's a budget amendment of $150,000 to recognize that interest income. Looking at our contract with Unified Fire Authority, I realized it was short about $200,000. So this budget amendment would correct the budget for what we pay to UFA for services. In addition, there's a $13,000 capital outlay for seismic upgrades at Station 103 that the council had previously, or excuse me, the board had previously approved through a resolution. So that's to budget that in place. As I had mentioned, that last transfer of $636,000 is to transfer funds to the new funds. So we're keeping the fire impact fees segregated. With that, are there any questions before the public hearing?
Thank you, Kyle. Okay, at this point, we will open for comment on this item. Casey, none? I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And look for any discussion or motion. There are motions on there, too, if we do a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution R 02-23, approving an amendment to the fiscal year 2023 Harriman City Fire Service Area Budget.
Second.
By Steve, second by Jared. Jared?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. That motion carries. Item 4.1, Harriman City Fire Safety Area Participation in CDA. Nathan?
So, the city used to fall under the Unified Fire Service Area, that collects our taxes, paid for fire. The city has since left and formed this board that you're working on where we collect our taxes and pay. Prior to all that, the Unified Fire Safety Area had partnered with the city's redevelopment agency, or Community Development Agency, to help fund and incentivize growth, commercial growth in certain areas. When the city did this with the police, there was actually a discussion, a decision at that time, but there has not been one with the city Fire Safety Area, whether they wish to participate or not. You have in your staff report a chart that shows what, if you adopted the same participation agreement that was in place with UFA, those numbers. I should point out, it's up to this board, one, if you participate and at what level. And the direction we're looking for tonight is if you desire us to bring you back participation agreements with the Community Development Agency to participate in those areas. Specifically, it's Harriman Town Center. This area here was funded, a lot of the infrastructure's been funded through tax increment financing. The Harriman Business Center, which is down by the RSL, that area where the soccer stadium, and then Anthem, which is the WinCo area primarily. So those are the three that UFASA was participating with. The, I'm gonna look to Kyle. I can't see him. He disappeared. He's over there. Oh, he moved. There's also the Innovation District, but it's a very small, very small urban, or renewal area simply because it got truncated, and we don't have to go through the history of that. So there may be some there, but I think it's a really small amount. It was almost de minimis. So, we would, what we're looking for, if you, one, do you want to participate? And if so, when we bring back these participation agreements, are these the ratios you want to participate at? Do you want to do something differently? We should say that in all of these, our partners, like the school district who participate, they have different ratios of what they're providing depending upon the agreement. Answer any questions if there are.
I will speak. I think you're in your.
I was gonna let others go first.
I would say, just, I think to your point, we've asked others to participate. I don't think it's, I think we might lose support from others if we don't ourselves participate as well. That's my take.
I'll try not to go back in time too much, right? So, this is, as you mentioned, this is a different discussion entirely from the Police Department and that separation. We had that discussion, that decision was made a long time ago, but we really haven't come back and discussed this since we left the Fire Service District area. Having led that effort to leave and negotiated that might, my only question, I know I brought this up in our meeting yesterday, has an analysis been done now that we are separate? Because the numbers are slightly different, right? So Unified Fire Service Area is the entire district area. So many municipalities rolled into one. They made a decision to participate, right? Using all of their, considering all of their resources. Separating from that, our numbers are a little bit different. So my question simply is, and I agree philosophically that we need to participate. My question is, is this the appropriate level, given what we're looking at as far as now we know what our growth model should be, or a better idea of it? We're talking about minimum two more stations, potentially three. Have we analyzed what this does to those plans and our finances for that going forward? That'd be my only question. I think we should participate, but at what level? We need to do that analysis.
Just to, on that point, we haven't updated the long-term models yet. First, I wanted to see what the board's thoughts were and if they wanted to participate in all of the different project areas. So, right now, those models haven't been updated.
So I'll just continue to say, I think that we should participate. My question is just gonna be, I think, kinda same vein of what we're talking about with the budget. I'd like to see an actual plan to base that decision on. Because, like I said, the economics are different for us versus the entire service area that approved it before. Does that make sense? The other point that I'll just note is, to just kind of further expand on what Nathan mentioned, for the CDAs, the majority of this, if not all of it, is supposed to be used for the infrastructure in those areas, right? So it helps with those things. So it's helping us on the other end as well. So, just reiterate, I think we need to participate, but we need to be measured and make sure that we're doing it in a way that, that doesn't hurt us down the road.
Absolutely. So if we give direction to just open it, then we can come back with, okay, that we're open to it? Okay. Is everybody open to participating? Steve, are you open to participating?
Yes.
Yes.
Sherry, are you open to participating?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Good on that, then, Nathan?
Yeah, we'll be bringing you back participation agreements and that model, so you can then make your decision in those agreements, how you want to do it. And then, of course, that agreement will, you'll get to decide on it twice here as the Fire Board, and then you can switch your hats and be the Community Development Agency and decide on it as well.
Okay. Thank you. Item 4.2, Discussion and Consideration of Resolution Adopting a Proposed Rate of Tax and Leaving Taxes Upon All Real and Personal Property. Within HCSA.
Thank you, Board. So this is the time of year that the boards and then also the City Council will look at adopting a tax rate. Just as a reminder from previous years, the board will have to decide on a tax rate or revenue generated by a tax rate by June 22nd. Is when we have to report to the county auditor what our decision is. And then from there, depending on what our option is, there's different options, different alternatives that we'll go through. But first thing I wanted to do, go through, is just a really brief high-level overview of how the certified tax rate works. So essentially, what the certified tax rate is, it's the rate that generates the same amount of revenue that the district received in the previous year, plus any new growth. So we don't, the service area won't receive any additional revenue from an increase in valuation. The way I like to think of it is, as your property value increases, the actual tax rate decreases. So in theory, you end up paying the same amount. I always like to add the asterisk. Parcels are in different tax districts, and it depends on how your property is increasing or decreasing relative to that tax district. So sometimes your property tax bill might go up $1 or $2 or decrease $1 or $2, depending on what other properties in your area you're doing. One important note with the certified tax rate is if the board decides they want revenue that's, and it, that's more than what the certified tax rate calculates, you do have to go through a process called Truth in Taxation. In short, it is, requires specific advertising requirements, and then a public hearing. That will usually occur at the end of August. The county will coordinate with the board and the district on when those notices have to be done and when we can have the meeting. With that being said, the county luckily does have our tax rate already calculated. So, the tax rate proposed, that'd be the certified tax rate, is 0.001318, which would generate revenue of $8,000,19,756. As you can see, I did break out what that base amount is and then how much we're looking at due to new growth within the district area. I do have a table below that shows the historical actuals. As you can see, our average home value within the district has fallen a little bit from $593,000 to $587,900. Because of that, as you can see, the tax rate did drop a little bit, not much. Going from 0.001320 to 0.001318. And just as a note, using that average value, the tax for an average home would be $440 a year, and that's just the district assessment. While it's connected to the tax rate, I did include a summary of the proposed district budget. As you can see, the majority of the funds are going to our contract with Unified Fire Authority, and also we do owe debt service to Unified Fire for our station. And then the increase in fund balance is putting money into our savings account. And just as a reminder for the public and the board, the district will have some significant capital and operating costs coming up as we bring new stations online. So really, the funds will be going towards building those stations and helping those operating costs. So it's really not fluff. It's already planned, and it has designated uses already. With that, before the public hearing is, or, actually, I don't think this has a public hearing. Are there any questions for me?
Nope. Okay. Thank you, Kyle.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make motion to approve Resolution R 03-23, adopting a proposed rate of tax and levying taxes upon all real and personal property within the Harriman City Fire Service Area.
Second.
Second by Teddy? Motion by Jared, second by Teddy. Jared?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. That motion carries. Look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Move on to the CDRA meeting. Look for, we'll read the motion for Jackie. 2.1, the motion to review and outline the finalization.
Sorry, repent from my last motion?
Yes, repent.
All right. Motion to have the minutes of June 14th, 2023, be prepared and distributed to each member of the Redevelopment Agency Board. The board will have 10 days to review the minutes and submit any changes to the secretary. If after 10 days there are no changes, the minutes will stand approved. If there are changes, the process will be followed until all changes are made and the board is in agreement.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Teddy? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Item 3.1, Review and Consideration of a Resolution of the CDRA to Adopt Budget Amendments. Kyle again.
Get his steps in.
Thank you, John. Nothing like being put on the spot. So tonight, Board, I have a few recommended budget amendments for our different project areas. For the most part, the amendments are just reconciling the budget to match what increment we received, and then we have a number of agreements that we have to pay out based on the increment received. I will note a few exceptions to that, but we'll just quickly go through each of the different project areas. So the first one is the Town Center. The major difference on this one is, finance has gone through and reconciled all of the impact fees back four years, and we've discovered a few of the impact fees were coded in the wrong funds. So we are proposing transfers in and out of different funds to reconcile those funds to where they should be. In the case of the Town Center, there was about 4,300 of impact fees that weren't, that were coded to water instead of the Town Center. So the proposal is to move those into the Town Center. In addition, we have to prepare a report every year for the Governor's Office of Economic. I've already forgot the O, and that GOYO's the acronym.
Opportunity.
Thank you, opportunity. So we are having a consultant prepare that. The $2,000 is a lot more, is significantly more than what the report's going to cost. But I do like to have some cushion built in there because I have on the tax increment adjustments. I mean, they are balanced down to the dollar, so this gives them leeway in case there's some unexpected costs that come up. Business Center is pretty straightforward. It is reconciling those tax increment payments with the agreements we've made with, and then I've added some admin costs for that report that we have to send to GOYO. In Anthem, it's a similar situation. I do want to mention a couple of things we've done. One is, we have broken out the different types of payments to their type. So we've split, we've split out the tax increment payments from the mitigation payments, which are payments we have to make back to the school district in Salt Lake County. With the sales tax incentive payments, I've noticed there was an accrual issue where we weren't accruing the payment back to the correct period. So, the budget's a little high because it will be two years' worth of those payments. It also helps, look, we can see what the final fund balance number is, and it's just better for planning if we do it that way. Accounting-wise, it is outside of the 60-day window we're required to accrue. We can accrue, so there was no accounting issue there, but it's just best practice. In addition, administrative fee for that GOYO report again.
Kyle, just to check on that previous slide. The sales tax incentive payments, you have the total of 547. Should that be 447?
You are correct.
Okay, just checking. Thank you.
The backup that's in the package should be correct. And that, that would be what the resolution would be, based off of, not this script.
Thank you.
But thank you for that catch. A little embarrassed, but thank you.
Well, I finally found he made him a statement.
I got you.
Wow, I got one.
The Innovation District is a similar situation, reconciling those increment payments received with our agreements, and then adding for the report to GOYO. And with that, are there any questions for the public hearing?
So he hasn't slept since he started here, and he's on caffeine, so that's. No questions.
Okay. We'll go to the, go ahead and open public comment. It says public comment on here. See none? I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing. Yep.
Yeah.
And this is just on this item.
What? On this one? Oh, sorry.
Not yet, yeah. No, you're okay. Okay, look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any comment or look for a motion?
Your turn.
Motion to approve Resolution R 2023-01, approving an amendment to the fiscal year 2023 Community Development Renewal Agency of Harriman City Budget.
Second.
Motion by Jared, second by Teddy. Steve?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Item 4.1, Discussion Regarding a Participation Agreement with HTC Communities to Reimburse for Infrastructure Improvements Associated with the Harriman Town Center. Blake?
All right. This is an item we've discussed several times so far as the council, but as the board, we've never discussed this item yet. So, the subject property is the Town Center. We're sitting in the Town Center right now, and the area around us is also included in that. This map shows the original map of the Town Center. This area that's, that's highlighted in the colorful drawing here is what is designated in, as the CDA, or the tax increment area for the Town Center. There were several infrastructure funding mechanisms for this area. A special assessment area was put together for it. Those assessments were paid when property was sold, and that went in to help fund a bond. And there were a couple of bonds that were, that were done. And the developer and the city have expended, as you can see here, a little over $20 million in infrastructure costs to bring services to the developments and the commercial areas in the Town Center and help expedite the growth of that area. The developer, a couple of years ago, approached the city to be reimbursed for their portion of the infrastructure costs that they put in. And it was a little over $19 million that they submitted invoices and bids and items for. And as we started reviewing them, we found out that there was no executed participation agreement identifying what was reimbursable and what wasn't. So we started working on putting together that participation agreement that would be funded from tax increment from the CDA to pay for those infrastructure improvements. So, this next slide is a map showing the location of the infrastructure improvements. Don't strain your eyes too hard on the table. I've got a table on the next slide. But this just gives you an idea of where those improvements were at. And this map follows very generally what was in the master development agreement for the Town Center, for their infrastructure improvements. So this, this is a breakdown of all the costs. So they did ask for a little over $19 million. As the costs were vetted out, it was a little bit less than that that we determined was eligible for the reimbursement. And there's one, all the projects on top, items 2 through 13, and then A, B, and C, are projects or payments that were already, that have already been completed. And the one project, project number one on the bottom, is 13200 South. We also call that Harriman Rose Boulevard. That's a project that is to be completed and funded out of the CDA as well. So, the, the estimation on this, or that, what we found out was $18,000, $18,788,000 was what was eligible for reimbursement from the CDA out of what was requested. And then, the bids just came in last week to the developer for Harriman Rose. They were about 1.2, but it didn't include any landscaping, so we added a $300,000. And for landscaping of that area, 1.5, they felt comfortable putting in the agreement, and engineering felt comfortable with that number as well. So, this total would be $20,288,000 that would get paid back through tax increment funding. And as the agreement reads, the developer gets paid back annually as the city receives those payments from the county, it's one time a year. And then, if there are no proceeds collected in any, in any year, those proceeds wouldn't, wouldn't be, we wouldn't be on the hook to pay anything. Kyle has some additional information on timing to possibly get paid back. He's done some models on the revenues and projections, if you have any questions on that. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions that the, that the board may have.
I don't really have any questions. I'll just comment, having, this was all, I mean, you see some of the dates on there, 2008. This is all done well before any of us were up here. And just going back to a few years ago when they started requesting money, I know how, what a mess it was and the agreements and everything. So just, a lot of appreciation to the work, the work that's been done to sort this out and obviously save the city a bunch of money versus what's being requested. So, just thank you for a job well done. I think this looks great. Got a great team together. The participation agreement looks good with all the things that we've talked about in previous discussions. Thank you.
If I can just ask a question. I think, if I recall, the first time we saw this in a, a meeting, talking about reimbursement requests, there were a lot of project improvements included in there, not just system improvements. Have, are we confident that we have adequately addressed, and the ones that are here are legitimate system improvements that we're comfortable with?
That is a great question, and yes, we're comfortable with it now. The, the one that we had the, the most confusion about was the stormwater and park improvements, item number 12. And as we got looking at it, the $494,000, I think the park improvements were close to like $4 or $5 million in park improvements they put in. And so this included the stormwater components. It wasn't clearly identified in there as that, but as we looked at it and did our own estimations, that came out that that, that's what it was. One other item to point out is the bond payments, item C. That has the asterisk by it, that those, those, that part will be reimbursed upon, once the bond is paid off. It'd be, and we wouldn't want to advise paying that off until the bond was actually paid off. So that'll be, those, those funds will be expanded towards the end, or in, Kyle and I were talking about it earlier today. Yeah, 2032, so towards the end of the collecting of the, of the TIF money for the CDA.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
It's on for action tonight, too, so.
It's on for action later night. Okay, perfect. Okay. Look for a motion to adjourn the CDA meeting, then.
We don't have a resolution to approve.
Uh-oh.
Okay.
Thank you, Jackie.
Looks good. It should be easy next time.
Consent agenda. Okay, look for a motion to adjourn the CDA meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, one more. We're gonna hurry. One more. Harriman City Safety Enforcement Area meeting now. Somebody want to read the motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to have the minutes of June 14th, 2023, be prepared and distributed to each member of the HCSA board. The board will have 10 days to review the minutes and submit any changes to the secretary. If after 10 days there are no changes, the minutes will be stand-approved. If there are changes, the process will be followed until all may, all changes are made and the board is in agreement.
Motion by Teddy?
Second.
Second by Jared. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 3.1, Discussion and Consideration of a Resolution Adopting a Proposed Rate of Tax and Leaving Taxes upon all real and personal property within HCSA. Kyle?
Thank you, Board. This is very similar to the Fire Service Area discussion. So this first slide is the same thing, but if we have anybody listening online, I do want to point out, the certified tax rate is the rate of revenue that we receive. That will generate the same amount of revenue we received the past year, plus any new growth. So it doesn't add any inflationary cost to that amount. If the board decides they want revenue in excess of what the certified tax rate generates, we do have to go through a process called Truth in Taxation, which involves a public hearing and specific noticing requirements. With that, I did want to just briefly touch on a couple of things before we get to the meat and bones of the tax rate. The first is the effect of inflation that inflation has on property tax in Utah because of the way the formula is structured. property tax in Utah because of the way the formula is structured. There's no revenue, inflation revenue component in that. So since the formation of HCSEA, the amount of inflation that hasn't been captured in that revenue number is about one point four million. Some other notes is we've received about five hundred and fifty-four thousand a year in new growth money, so that's additional revenue that's coming in. I always do like to point out, that's really not a windfall for the district because we have to provide services to those new residents that are coming into the district. A couple other notes is police salaries have increased about thirty-three percent since twenty eighteen, so they've outpaced general inflation. And then just a final note is that, as I had previously mentioned, we're getting new growth money, but we are having to provide services to those new residents within the district. With that being said, I just wanted to go over what the tax rate is calculated by the Salt Lake County Auditories. So it is a tax rate of zero point zero zero one three one eight, which would lead to revenue of eight million nineteen thousand seven fifty-six. The base and the new growth are included there. And then I also have included the last three years historical numbers on the base and new growth that the district's been receiving and then the tax rate. If the board decides to accept the certified tax rate, that's about a four hundred and forty dollar average amount for the average home in Harriman. To go a little bit into the budget, as the board decides whether to accept a tax rate or not, I did want to go over the budget summary for the Harriman City Police Department for twenty twenty-four. So initially, there was a projected deficit of approximately one point one million. Some of this was due to multi, there's a multitude of items, one being we were using impact fees as operating revenue. In addition, there were some personnel items that weren't budgeted correctly. And the tax revenue projections that were being used for HCSEA were overly aggressive. So all those factors combined led to this budget shortfall. So the proposals to balance the budget with the existing revenues were to be to eliminate the three new officers that were being proposed and their associated vehicles. The general fund would be paying in the future for crossing guards versus the taxing district paying for those crossing guards. And then also eliminating a vacant mental health specialist position, which saves about eighty thousand dollars. At the bottom, for the board's consideration and discussion as we move forward, I do have, if the board chose to add officers, what exactly does that cost? It's approximately two hundred and forty thousand that first year due to both the personnel cost and then also the, the new officer would need a vehicle. With that, the staff does have a recommendation for the board. And it would be to look at a small incremental increase in property tax revenue. A two hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase would be about a three point two percent increase. And how staff came up with that number is that's the amount between projected revenues from growth and then the direct salary cost increases that the police department's been seeing. That would be about a fourteen dollar per year average increase. A note on the bottom is addition, moving forward, additional officers, just with the way new growth is occurring, will most likely require additional property tax revenue or a subsidy from the general fund to fund those officers or, as more officers are added.
So if I'm just doing the math correctly, every new officer that we would need to add is approximately three percent increase in tax rate?
Roughly, yes. Yep.
And that's just a steep pace. And that's without inflation costs on everything else.
And that's without a public safety building?
People are expensive. Which is again why. Sorry, do you have more?
No, please.
Kyle's like, please let me out of here.
Just again, why, I think we need to have a, a real growth plan and model. I mean, yes, we do have new growth and we do have funds from those five hundred thousand. Is that really two officers with everything, with the things you just added on? No, it's not.
No, because you have continually.
Continual inflation is compounded every year, et cetera.
Benefits and all this.
So I, having read through everything and, and looked at the presentation, I'll say my piece and move on. We've had several very in-depth, lengthy discussions about this, which included a very lengthy impromptu lecture from me about government finance and the difference between inflation and discrete market pressures, et cetera. I'll spare you all that if you really want to listen to it again. It's recorded. Go ahead. I'll just say that I think this captures the general direction that we gave. Wow, and I'll just, my opinion remains that three point two percent is not very much. It doesn't seem like very much. It closes that gap for this year, but it does not address the ongoing issues. And I would still rather us tighten our belts in other areas for that two sixty, right? That we talked about capital projects, et cetera, for this year and work on that complete plan and have a, kind of like we just talked about with the water district and have a, a growth structure and model mapped out that I can point to rather than, we need this this year and we're gonna have to ask you for more again. Right?
If I could just, before you move on, I just want to provide a clarifying point. We do have the budget balanced without the tax increase. It just does not include any new officers and it includes eliminating the mental health position. So I, I wanted just to be clear, we don't need the three point two percent to balance the budget without those officers.
So the.
But did that include the, a subsidy from the general fund?
There's still the two sixty.
We're changing carse garage over.
So I, I think the, one of the challenges is it solves it for this year. Next year, your shortfall is bigger. These are a lot of one-time savings that we've done.
Well, not only that, Nathan, but the shortfall is bigger financially, but we're already down four positions. Potentially eight positions, potentially.
But I guess that's the question I want answered is are we, are we down? Where the request was to add them, what does the model look like?
I don't think the people requesting to add them would ask to add them if they didn't need them. Yeah, and my understanding from talking with chief is that these are, the specific officers are peak time officers, right? That it's so that when the time when things are most active and there's most need, there's an additional officer on shift at that time. And I, and I, I think Teddy was about to articulate it, I'll just say it again, that the concern I have, it's not just budget, there's a public safety component of the budget discussion. And my concern is, is that without, okay, we tighten, we don't do the tax increase this year, how much more does it have to be next year and the year after to play catch up and do this? I, there's a part of me that thinks that we should be looking, I mean, we're talking about a dollar a month on an average house, a dollar ten or whatever on an average house. I'm gonna make an assumption that if we surveyed the residents, they would be okay paying a dollar a month extra to make sure that there's a police officer available when they need one. And, and whether it's three percent or five percent or ten percent, I agree that it needs to be part of a holistic plan. But the one thing that I'm, one thing concerns me is if that plan means we're really missing something in the public safety arena, that, that might trump all other decisions. I'm not saying it will, but it, it certainly might.
I, I agree with, with what you just said as you said it. I don't know that that's necessarily the case this year. And yes, we want to be proactive, et cetera. And having extra during that time right now would be nice. And if I asked my friends and neighbors, would you mind paying a couple of dollars extra to have that today? They'd say, yeah, sure, why not? But if I give them the compounding math that that is, plus the other stuff, then that can be different.
It's not gonna get any better, though. I mean, the, the three point two percent, I think it's very low and conservative right now, especially with the future plans. If we are truly gonna have our own police force, like we have, and we're gonna fund them properly, you gotta look at where are they gonna live? They were never meant to live in this building, right? We have to look for that ten-year plan, that fifteen-year plan. And if we don't increase or even double it to the six point four or six point four percent, you're gonna, we're gonna be behind that ball and we're never gonna have that public safety building.
Well, I'm, I'm, don't, again, don't misunderstand me. I'm not saying we shouldn't make increases. I, I'm saying I would prefer to thoroughly analyze and have a plan in place to make those.
I've heard that for the last eight years of thoroughly analyzing, let's look at the plan, give me the numbers, let's get that paper in front of us. And through those eight years, we haven't had the staff here that we can rely on and trust. And through the last two years, we've missed boats on several opportunities where we can increase our, our, the city has opportunity to increase their, their vision, their goals forward. But the last little bit has been stagnant. Show me the plan, show me where the money, show me the numbers. They get them, they have them. We need to pull the trigger and make decisions at this point. This plan is still in the infancy right now, but it's time that we need to say, yes, we're gonna accept this tax rate or not. Do I think this tax rate's low? I do. I think it should be double personally. Because we need to look and say, we need to build a station, we need to build a evidence locker room, we need to build these facilities, we need to build a dog shelter that's part of this problem. We need to work with our partners in Jordan School District to pay for our resource officers. They've come up a little bit, we need to figure out how we're doing crossing guards. We need to cut down on crossings, we need to work with them where we're placing schools so we can limit crossings. There's a lot of those things, but, oh, show me the plan. It's six, eight months. And we see that with, with fiber, we see that with several things. This takes time, but in that process, we need to, it's June second or July second is when we need to accept it, right?
June twenty-second.
June twenty-second. So we have less than twenty days.
And Jared, and I get what you're saying, not to cut you off, but I'm gonna try to move this. We have a week. And Jared, I get what you're saying, because I do agree there, there might be some more work to do, but we all know that work, we know that data is not gonna come back and tell us that we should keep it where we're at. Right? And then we're next year and we're, I mean, is it ten, twelve percent next year? Cause we, you know, I, I asked, I mean, I had my lunch today, my informal poll, thirty people there today. If we were to do five dollars a month, would any of you hesitate? Not one. All of them, as a matter of fact, said, we'd go out in the streets in raw, we'd be your biggest advocate to fight for. And I don't, then we could still reanalyze next year where we're at with that still in place. I'm just, I don't, I think we can, we belabor this, I think, I mean, we've got residents here that are wanting to speak at seven and we're gonna talk more about this. Can we agree that we need to have a truth in taxation and set, do we set this right and we can still, we can, the final decision gets made, correct me if I'm wrong, it gets made at the truth in taxation hearing?
Correct, so if you decide to propose a revenue amount tonight, that is what will show up in the truth in taxation notices. We will have the hearing and at that point, the board can decide what they decide to accept. They can accept an amount higher, but they can accept an amount lower not, or go ahead and accept the certified tax rate.
So what you're saying is we need to propose a high, a different revenue number?
We need to throw a dart at a dartboard.
If, if you want, if we want to say that we will potentially change it, then we need to say that now. And then we'll continue to have this debate and make that decision, what is it, August?
Correct, you set the max in, in your notice. And, and I will say, staff, we've been working on a plan, so we met with police. We're shifting away from the population-based planning that's been done in the past and trying to use data to determine, when do we need officers, what are those? And they're, in, in the staff report, we talk about it, I think I put it in there, it's been so long, we've done so many things. You, you have drivers in patrol, right? When do we need patrol officers? We have different metrics and drivers that happen in investigations. We added an investigator last year, detective, but those case numbers kind of indicative of our community, our investigators are very busy with heavier cases than some. Just take more time, a lot of domestic violence, a lot of those things that are just time consuming. So they have their own metric. And then within the administrative side, so in, in special operations, there's been a marked increase in demands on staff per grandma. And, and so we have to, so essentially in this model, we have to figure out what are the triggering events for those three different groups as, as the department grows, as a community grows. And so we are working on that, like I said, we're trying to move it away from just, we have this much growth, we need an officer. We want to look at what's going on and, and chief has done a great job of capturing data so we can start to bring that forward and, but that is, it's different than what we have done when this was formed four years ago. And, and so trying to bring these long-range plans in is just, it's taking time simply because that we're limited, we're a small staff. We do run lean, if you look at our, at our comparator cities around, they have larger staffs than we do, so we're trying.
Like I said, it was only created four years ago. We've changed every person in these seats in the last twenty, eighteen to twenty-four months, right? So it does take a little time. Just for a point of clarification, numbers, the, the three point two does not give us enough to hire the three. Or does it?
No, that's correct.
Barely gives us one.
It barely covers one.
The, the idea is it was starting to address what we're actually seeing in market and in increases with the existing staff versus what your new growth is providing. So for the, for the residents, we started with thirty-five officers. The school, Mountain Ridge High School opened, so we immediately needed to hire an additional officer to provide an SRO. So we did that. We get paid from the district about forty percent. It used to be a lot less than that, we went up, they pay us about forty percent of the cost of that officer. But we have to hire them, we train them, we provide them the equipment. So as you move forward, then there was a decision by council to hire additional officers for traffic safety because we were seeing a lot of complaints. Our most recent was we hired the detective and then another person in administration to help. But of the sworn officers, there was also a sergeant added at that time to do Hispanic control. So it's not that the department has just exploded in growth. One real cost is if you look at what we, when we started in two thousand and eighteen to now, police officer salaries per hour are up ten dollars. There were thirty, now they're over forty. It's a very significant, within the Salt Lake Valley, there was a lot of pressure. Other cities, Salt Lake City, West Valley, Taylorsville, I think most recently, we keep getting these, after the budgets, like double-digit increases from them and it's hard to stay. We are, we are in the bottom third of what we pay. We have a good community, it still attracts officers, but there is this competitive piece we do have to watch out for because there are not enough people going into the law enforcement world. We are seeing more retirements than we are recruitments.
I recognize there's an issue, right? And not to rehash all of Jared's discussions the other day, right? But some of this is the fact that there are market pressures that we just can't chase forever, right? There's, there's certain places where we just, we, we can't chase Salt Lake City's ridiculous policies on the backs of taxpayers on a permanent basis. On the other hand, we have to recognize the fact that even if we're doing a portion of it, we're still thirty-three percent behind just in salaries. Not to mention just the overall inflationary costs in vehicles and equipment and everything else that's happened. So just to keep the status quo, there has to be a pretty substantial increase in the revenue in there. Then when you take into consideration the, the needs above and beyond that with officers, mental health officers, other vehicles replacements, public safety buildings, other needs they have, you know, the, the animal shelter, evidence needs, all that other kind of stuff. I mean, the, the scope of this thing is just mind-boggling. And so, I, I mean, I hate tax increases, but when it's taxes that are for public safety, for fire, when it's for police, when it's things that are a tangible, quantifiable benefit direct to the public, that's a lot more palatable to me than if it's, hey, let's.
Totally agree.
Let's get into the squishy stuff, right? But I'm saying, I mean, even a fifteen percent increase, which sounds ridiculous, is about five dollars a month per household. It's real money, it definitely impacts budgets, I'm not, I'm not declaring that that doesn't. But even that, that doesn't, that doesn't even cover the costs of the wage increases we've had to do over the past three years.
Which is why we need that plan. I just want to go back to a couple of things and clarify, right? And we can debate all of this as we go in to actually vote for an increase. What this is proposing. What this is proposing is a 3.2% is to close a gap, if you read the material, close a gap of $260,000 to keep what, to basically pay what we have this year. We're not adding anyone. It's not adding those officers from peak times. That's not what it's doing. It's providing the 260,000 so that we don't have to take it from the general fund.
We're still taking money from general fund.
The 260. They've, they've gone through and made some of the adjustments that we had talked about in the previous meetings. This, correct me if I'm wrong Kyle, but this suggestion is increase it to cover the 260,000 so that we don't have to do without some of the.
No, this, this is already, the 1.1 million is the officers, the, the crossing guards and the mental health. That totals the 1.1 million.
Staff recommends adopting revenues $260,000 greater than what the certified tax rate will generate.
So, so the intent of that is, again, small incremental. When you asked us to analyze it first, we proposed 6.5, that would have covered this. The direction was to move the 311,000 from crossing guards into the general fund, reduce general fund expenses accordingly, so that's what has happened. This proposal from staff is, in my opinion, you need to start either making the incremental cuts or, or increases or you're going to have to make really large increases in the future. My understanding is that, that the council felt having incremental increases made more sense. You certainly don't have to do it this year. The police department will function. There's not, I mean, if they come forward and say, hey, we want to do this or that, it's probably not happening.
We're not cutting anything, not taking anything away.
The thing you are doing is not hiring the, the three. One of the challenges that happened in this budget is we were counting those impact fees as operating. Since Kyle's gotten here, we pulled those out and you see that it's not. So that was about 400, 500,000 a year.
Uh, yes, and just to clarify, the only thing the general fund is subsidizing is the crossing guards. And the budget is currently balanced with the certified tax rate. Staff's recommendation is to start looking at these incremental increases. Right now, staff doesn't have a proposal for this additional revenue. Um, it could be for officers next year. You could even hire an officer this year with those funds.
Your balance in this fund is how high?
It's roughly 230 to 40, 240,000. There's.
So, so there's, there's very little cushion in this budget to do anything, which is part of what the recommendation was to cover.
So what I'm trying to say is, let's be clear on what this does and expectations, because at least I'm reading into some misunderstanding.
Well, let's get that clarity. I'll take, I'm going to take it. I'll take it on the, if there's political capital, I guess, that's, if you want to call it that. I'm going to propose, and you guys can tell me what you think. I'm going to propose, we put out, and I want to go high, just because we can't come down, we can't go higher, right? I would rather go high and come down. I would propose an 8% right now at this point.
I'm with Steve on a 15% proposal out to the public and the truth in taxation.
Yeah, and I'd like to hear public input and if there's, you know, a lot of concern about that and press back, we can obviously go.
Now, I, I know that this may not be the only tax increase that they're seeing, especially from last year, but I, I think that this is a needed one. And to your point, Jared, we're not taking anything away. We are, we've got four officers right there that we could hire today if we had the funds. That we could need and protect our community at a higher rate.
I would also say as part of that too, and I think this is the thing is, I'm not suggesting that we should increase so that we can hire the, all of these officers right now. I'm saying we need an increase just as a backstop. And we may choose to say, okay, let's hire one new officer this year.
Correct.
And leave the additional cushion so we can at least have something built in that fund.
And I don't.
And we're start, yes, we're starting to have revenues in excess of budget instead of revenues below budget so that we can, we can start creating a path forward to not only correctly adj, uh, address the needs of the department, but also potentially create the public safety facility that's needed.
Okay, so let me, I've got, yep, so, okay, let's get that. Sherry, I'd like to hear, do you have a thought? And we've got to move on because we've got public here that came at seven for comments and nothing will get decided tonight anyway. So Sherry, do you have a thought?
No, I, I, I've, listen, I think that, um, I'm a little bit split myself. I do believe that there needs to be a really good comprehensive plan that's showing how to roll this out. And so I hate just throwing a number out there. Which kind of feels like is what we're doing, but I, I do believe that we need to, we need to have a truth in taxation hearing. And so the question is, what number are we going to throw out at the hearing? Is that the question?
Yeah, can, we have to put that out tonight, basically. So that's what, I guess you've got a 15, eight, or zero?
The 3.2.
Or 3.2.
Or something.
I'm just kind of wondering where you're at on that. So we can give guidance to what to post.
Probably be more inclined to have the eight. And then we, um, move forward with that, but I don't know. It sounds very, very fragmented there.
It is.
And it's going to be a tough conversation, yeah.
What if we, let me propose something. What if we just split kind of the difference and let's start at 10? What if we start at 10 this year? I can go up, I can get on board with a 10. Can we do a 10 and be okay?
I, I, as I said in the last meeting, I want to have the public hearing and have the discussion, but.
We don't have time.
But we've got to put a number out right now. That's what I'm saying. I'm, can we put out 10? I mean, we can go to 15 if we need to. But I'm trying to find a compromise that will.
Well, here's what, 15% on a public notice will fill this room. And we will get plenty of public input and we will be able to make a very educated decision at that point in time. It'll be a long meeting.
That would be about 1.2 million, right? We're at 8 million, just rounding. Kyle's going to.
I'm doing the math.
Doing math real quick.
It's about 1.2, 1.3.
Okay. Let's do it and start from there.
I think our.
So I think we're looking for probably a motion or some resolution. You got to put it in the resolution.
I would just put an increase of the certified tax rate by 15% and that should be sufficient.
At what? Sorry.
Um, when you make the motion to adopt the, or the resolution, specify that you're proposing to increase the certified tax rate by 15%.
Okay.
You ready for?
Yep, do it.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution R. 23-02, adopting the new recommended rate of 15%. Is that correct?
Above the certified tax rate.
Oh, a, a new rate above the certified tax rate of 15% tax levy and levy upon taxes upon a real and personal property within the Harriman City Safety Enforcement areas.
Motion by Teddy.
Are you good with that? Okay, I'll second.
Second by Steve. Uh, Jared?
Yes, with the comment after.
Okay, Teddy?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
I know about yes as well. Get Jared, go ahead.
Comment simply, my yes vote is to have the public hearing and have the discussion.
So is mine.
That's it.
Just to be clear, I'm not advocating necessarily for that rate. I just think it's a great number to have, to start a really robust conversation about.
Agreed.
Okay, look for a motion. Look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourn Harriman Safety Enforcement Area Meeting. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll get to our general meeting. Now we're behind. We apologize. Thank you for, everybody for sticking with us. Um, are we okay just moving right in? We okay without a break for our residents? Okay, move on to our general meeting then. Uh, we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. Is Matt still here? We're going to start with pledge of allegiance by Matt.
Is Matt still here? He's, he's not the way.
Please stand, pledge, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matt. Move on to item 4.2, city council comments and recognitions. I will just say, if nobody's, I'm going to, I want to recognize that everybody involved with the rodeo. Again, a very successful rodeo, sellouts two nights in a row, a lot of fun. So, thank you for everybody involved with that. That being said, we'll move on to item five. Public comment. Audience members may bring any item to the city council's attention. Comments will be limited to two minutes. State law prohibits the council from acting on items that do not appear on the agenda. Public comments for this meeting will also be conducted electronically. Any person in addressing the council may submit a comment by emailing a recorder at harriman.org or by visiting harriman.org slash agendas and minutes where there's a link to fill out an online public comment form. Your statement will be incorporated into the record. So if anybody's here for any of these items tonight, now's the time. Just come forward, just state your name, and then you have two minutes.
Okay, my name is Camry Capson and I've never done this before, so hopefully I do it right. Um, I'm going to speak on behalf of a couple of different households in tonight's meeting. So, I know that there are probably people in this room that are anti-breeder and, you know, there's the adopt, don't shop, and we're advocates for, for both sides of it. Adopt and shop responsibly is what we like to call it. Um, as far as what we do, we do breed and we have been in the city of Harriman for five years now. And I've never had a complaint from any of our neighbors. Um, somebody that does not even live in the city of Harriman, from my understanding, called in and made a, not even a complaint to animal control, but asked them to come do a welfare check on my dogs. Um, luckily I was compliant because I didn't have to be and that's kind of what I want to address tonight. So, under the city ordinances for the fanciers permit or kennel permits, um, it actually doesn't even say this on Harriman, on the city, like fanciers permit, it doesn't say anything about only having one litter at a time. But that is something that was brought to my attention by animal control and in zoning and planning um, when I talked to them. And in reality, it's not realistic. So the dog limit is three dogs per household. Um, so even if I had three bitches, say I had a four-year-old, a two-year-old and an 18-month-old, generally all of your bitches are going to cycle together because that's what they do. So, if I skip one of my bitch's cycles, I put my, or if I choose one and skip my other two bitch's cycles, I'm putting my other two bitches at risk for something called pyometra, which is, it can kill a dog. It's a uterine infection that develops from having heat cycles that are not bred on. And for breeders like us that put several thousands of dollars into our dogs, we serve our community, we go to the assisted living centers, we go to schools, we educate kids on service dogs. Um, it's a lot to lose a dog just because our city says you can have one litter on the ground at a time. If my dogs aren't causing an issue for my neighbors, then it shouldn't be an issue. Like if my dogs are taken care of, I'm following protocol. As far as animal licensing goes, a few people have asked me, who says if some people can't keep one or two dogs under control, that you could keep 15 under control? Well, how many of you guys even knew that I had a dog in here tonight, except for if you saw her? Well-trained dogs shouldn't be a nuisance. And that's the moral of the story is, the reason I can have 15 dogs under control at my house is because they're all like this. And so, I just think that there are a lot of things in place without any education to back it up. And that's frustrating. And while all of you guys are very well-educated and you know laws or accounting or, you know, safety measures, what things are zoned for, you don't know about animal health. And I don't feel like an attorney or something, I'm not saying you specifically, but I don't feel like an attorney.
He, he's an attorney, they're used to it.
I'm not targeting you, but I don't feel like an attorney that doesn't know anything about animals should be able to make our city laws. And that's something that I'm very passionate about because I have eight years in the veterinary field. I've been breeding for six years and obviously I've not created a problem with any neighbors. But in all reality, like, do you feel comfortable making laws about animals without knowing the medical things behind it?
Go ahead, answer.
Typically, we don't have a back and forth conversation during the public comment, so that's why I was looking at the mayor for.
Gotcha, sorry.
I'm happy to respond, but.
Let's leave it rhetorical now.
Yeah, we'll leave it, yeah. So we don't have a back and forth usually right now, until later than.
So, that's something that like I guess leave is like, the question is, without a veterinary background, is the city comfortable making laws stating what I can and can't do with my dogs if it's against veterinary advice? Because I've talked to my vets and they told me, breed my dogs back to back because it's in the best interest of the dog. So, therefore, if my city's saying something different, my veterinarian's saying something different, I'm risking the health of my dogs because some educated, uneducated person doesn't know what they're talking about. And I have a major problem with that. That's kind of where I stand.
Perfect, thank you, Camry.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And Camry, I will say just as comment, you and I talked earlier on the phone today a couple of times, but as, as you know, tonight's our first blush, our first look at this agenda. Um, and this will be the five of us. Our attorney actually does not make, he might give us legal advice as to how it applies to other codes, but it will be on the five of us. So I would encourage anybody, as we're, as we're starting through this, you'll hear our comments tonight and see where things are headed. But like you and I talked, we'll, we'll keep in touch because I would like to, I don't know, I can't handle one dog, you know, I can't handle one dog. So I'm just, as I'm saying, reach out to us, keep us, listen to what's going on. This will be a process, so reach out to, I would email all five of us, you know, your concern and what you would like to see and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Most of Salt Lake County, I guess, up to date with the state, most of Salt Lake County is you can have as many dogs as you want as long as they're licensed, taken care of and up to date on rabies. And as long as you have a kennel permit or like a fanciers permit.
Okay, okay, appreciate it. Thank you, Camry.
Hi, my name is Nicole Gokritz and my husband here is Brian. Um, we, I own Soul Desire Golden Retrievers. I live in Harriman. Um, I co-owned a few dogs with Camry and then I have my own dogs myself. I've put in thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars to get this going. My husband actually is retired law enforcement. Um, and he stays home with our dogs. They're very well cared for. Um, we have a love for our dogs, a love for this business. If I don't have this business, my family suffers. I can't afford to live anywhere else or pick up and move because interest rates are so high. And I love this city. I love being a Harriman resident and I love my business and I give back to the community so much. I'm going out to the Beehive House with my dogs. They are very, very special dogs, so I'm hoping that we can figure some things out. I'd like to be able to get a kennel license and be in compliance. I'd like to be able to have the amount of dogs I need to, to run my business and to take care of them well. Um, and to be able to have more than one litter on the ground, like she said, they do cycle together. I have lost a bitch to pyometra before and it was devastating for me and my family. Um, so, I just wanted to tell you that, um, I hope you will consider that when you're making your decisions and that we can get a kennel license and be able to, um, be in compliance and do things the correct way because that's really what we'd like to do.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay, see no further public comment at this point. We'll move on to item 6.1. Council reports, item six. Uh, anything from Jared?
The fire board is next week and I'll regale you with tales next time.
Can't wait. Okay, Teddy?
Um, I was not, uh, able to make it to the sewer board this last month, um, due to some family trips, so I don't have anything to report.
Uh, Sherry, from Toronto.
I'm, uh, actually in Toronto at the AWWA, American Water Works Association Conference here. Learning lots about water and, um, just global issues that affect water and, it was funny, one of the, one of the common, comments that I wrote down was, should we price water by the human health benefit? And so I, I kind of chuckled at that because we're always talking about water, water rates and things like that. And it's a good thing we don't have to pay as much for our water as we have to pay for an X-ray. But conservation obviously is a, is a key topic here and as it has been for our state for quite some time now just because of the, um, conditions that we find ourselves in and primarily from a growing population, quite frankly. Certainly, we've had, um, cycles in moisture and things of that nature, but a lot of it's just simply due to a growing population and those types of things have to continuously be addressed. So, um, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and I'll, I'll bring back some more information. You know, in the coming weeks, I have a few. you know, in the coming weeks, I have a few questions for Justin and even our team to see about even our billing processes and things like that, see if we're maximizing some of the things that are suggested here. And then youth council, and I'm going to tell you, I'm pretty sure it's forty-nine kids signed up this year, so we did a ton of interviews over the last few, a couple of weeks, and we have a great group of kids coming in. I know that some of our outgoing youth council are going to be signing up, hopefully, next month, to present some of their legacy projects to us, and then hopefully, next month also, we'll be able to get on the agenda for the swearing-in for these new incoming youth council, but obviously, they're going to be helping out a lot at town days and everything, so as always, just hopefully, we can just really welcome them in and get good participation out of them, and just a great group of new leaders coming into our next year's youth council. And that's all.
Thank you, Sherry.
So, two quick reports. Number one, Association Municipal Council meeting, it was really enlightening to me. There was a kind of a peer-to-peer conversation happen. Normally, we have a presentation, this was just kind of a roundtable discussion, and they were talking about public finance, issues about how they fund infrastructure and things. And it was surprising to me how disparate the approaches are between the cities. Some have impact fees, some don't. Some have impact fees for only a couple of things, some have impact fees for everything you could possibly think of. Some don't believe in impact fees, and they think it should all be direct taxes. Some people didn't even know what a PID was. I mean, it was such interesting that just in Salt Lake County with fifteen different, seventeen different municipalities, no two cities have the same way of financing public infrastructure. So I don't think there's the best practice, I don't think there's, I don't think anybody's got it figured out yet, so I think we're in the right track, asking questions and reviewing the way we approach things and seeing if we can come up with a better way to do it. So, same thing from the mosquito abatement board, buckle up, I think we're in for some interesting numbers. They, so for this time of year, they, the traps normally have, I think they get about a thousand mosquitoes in a trap, and they, they're up to about twenty-eight hundred mosquitoes in a trap right now. So it is, it is a monumental number of mosquitoes out there. They are abating as best they can, getting out, doing ahead of things. I will just bring everybody's attention, a program that I was not aware of until this last week, called mosquito fish. I didn't know that such a thing existed. But if you have any standing bodies of water on your property, you know, any ponds or detention basins or anything like that where there's standing water, you can call the mosquito abatement board, and they will come out and deliver to your house, to your water, mosquito fish. These are fish that specifically eat the larvae of mosquitoes, and that's what they feed on. They're very aggressive, they go right after them, and they're great at keeping the population of mosquitoes down. The, they're a non-native species, so they don't winter well, meaning there's a, the most likely outcome is that the fish will not survive the winter, and so they won't be a permanent resident in your pond or water. But it's a great way to abate mosquitoes without having to use any chemicals or any other treatments or anything like that. So if you have that, please reach out to the South Salt Lake Mosquito Abatement District, and they can come out and bring those mosquito fish out to your house. So, I love the mosquito board, man, we got to learn so much cool stuff on there. But they have not had any West Nile virus cases yet, they don't anticipate those to start showing up until probably late this month, maybe early next month when they do some testing, so I'll probably have some updated numbers next month.
Brivity.
Mosquito fish, man, it's great.
Thank you, Steve. And I look back, and I don't have any, had a few committee meetings, but nothing to report pertinent to Herriman at this point. So we'll move on to item eight, Reports Presentations and Appointments, 8.1 Fiscal Year 2023 Fraud Risk Presentation. And you're okay to, by the way, you guys are okay to, yes? Yep, yep, sorry, Kyle, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Due to the agenda tonight, I'll try to be brief. So each year, I, as the CFO of Herriman City, have to present to you as the governing body our fraud risk assessment for the year, this is required by the State Auditor's Office, they put this into place in fiscal year 2020, to hopefully help boards, commissions, and councils across the state understand, or at least highlight, some possible risk areas they might have within their governments. They're designed to identify best practices, all these items on their list are recommended but not required, and just as a reminder, it's not a duplication or replacement of the internal control assessment the auditors will do at the end of the year as part of their year-end audit. Overall, the city did very well, we have a low-risk level, there's only a couple items we weren't able to record points on, I just want to quickly go over those with you and just highlight some corrective actions I'm looking at. One is, you do get points if you have a licensed certified expert on your management team meeting, you have a certification or CPA. I do not have a CPA, I passed three of the four tests, it's a long story. I did have one of the certifications that lapsed a few years ago when I was working in another entity when they didn't have the training funds for me to keep that. However, as a mitigating control, we do have a certified accountant on staff, she doesn't have managerial responsibility, which is why we can't record the points. Next is the employees, elected officials are required to annually commit to a statement of ethical behavior. I'm going to talk to HR about this, this should be fairly easy to implement, and I am looking at something similar on the purchasing side when we look at redoing our purchasing policy. The third one is, we do not have a formal internal audit function, meaning we don't either have in-house internal audit staff, or we don't contract with a separate CPA firm to perform those functions. It is quite costly, of course, to have in-house staff and then having a completely separate company looking at that. There are some options I was planning on discussing with the Audit Committee at our next meeting to either mitigate it or look at some other options I might have, and we can have a discussion on that and see if there's anything we can do in a cost-effective manner. As I mentioned, our score was 335 out of 395 points, so that puts us at a low level. There is no requirement of you to pass anything tonight, it's just informational only, so... Do you have any questions for me?
Just know Sherry and I are going to be really excited to hear about that internal audit discussion. We've been harping on that for at least three and a half years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Okay, item 9.1, Public Hearing and Consideration of Resolution Amending the Budgets of Herriman City. You're back up, Kyle.
This is the night of the year you see a lot of me because all the financial stuff comes due at the same time. At the last council work meeting, we discussed a number of budget amendments that I'm requesting. We went over those in detail. For this presentation, I just want to go over some highlights instead of going through all of the detail, of course, you can ask any questions as we go along. One thing is, you'll notice in the packet, there's some items that are listed in red, those are changes that have happened since I did that initial discussion of the amendments to you. They mainly focus around, Finance has completed a full assessment of the internal charges we charge to other city departments, some adjustments needed to be made, which actually freed up some funds within the general fund, so I did put those in even though we didn't have a discussion on it because it's fairly straightforward. And the rest of these, I had mentioned in the previous meeting, there were some vehicle purchases that weren't in the budget, however, the council had given verbal approval for those. In addition, as we were reconciling things, we realized some of our vehicle lease payment amounts were off in the budget. As you know, we had an exceptional snowy winter, and the Streets Department did a fantastic job, but they did spend more money than in the budget by a hundred and nine thousand. A thing we did discuss last time in great detail is some of the inherent deficits that were in the Police Department Fund, the main one being that we were using impact fees as operating revenue. This budget amendment corrects that and alleviates that deficit, and we're actually moving the impact fees to a separate fund. A couple of notable capital projects, one is, this budget amendment does put in the budget for the Animal Services Tenant Finish of seven hundred thousand. Also, we have a contract with Strata for work on the fiber project, fifty-nine thousand, and just as a note, if the city does proceed and issue bonding for that, we can reimburse ourselves with bond proceeds for that, so there's a potential, some funds could be coming back to cover that. And the Police Services Fund, as you know, they purchased a number of vehicles this year, which means they had a number of vehicles to sell, so this does recognize revenue from those vehicle sales. In addition, they do bill outside entities, one of the main ones being the Jordan School District for services performed, so this is recognizing that revenue, and there's a corresponding offset in personnel. As I mentioned, we're moving impact fees to a separate fund, so they're not commingled with police operating funds. And then there was a deficit fund balance in the Police Fund of approximately 2.5 million. One note, and we did discuss this last time, is when the financial statements are prepared, the Police Fund is rolled into the general fund, so the fund balance number you were seeing in the financial statements was net of that deficit. In addition, the monthly reports I send out to you showing available fund balance, each of the funds does have that number already netted out, so it's not going to be a change of what you see, but it cleans up the accounting. It also makes it easier that if somebody asks for a fund balance, they're not having to do multiple calculations to get to the number. In public safety, I have split the police from non-police. The non-police is mainly for animal services, so as you know, we executed a lease for a space for animal services, this accounts for the lease payments and utilities for the rest of the year, and then we did receive a grant through UFA in the state for a sandbagging machine and some pumps, which was coded into emergency management. In the ARPA Fund, Engineering had requested some contingency funds for their projects, five thousand for each project, and I did note what percentage that is of the overall project cost. Finance has noted that once these projects are complete, I do need to bring back to council what the overshort of those different projects were, so you can see that accounting for that. In addition, there was some improvements being requested for Rose Canyon, in particular, landscaping improvements that we will be receiving some bond forfeiture money for, I actually have the paper on my desk to transfer those funds over. In addition, the McHouston Storm Drain Project, Engineering requested an additional twenty-seven thousand five hundred for design work. And then all these adjustments, right now, are being offset with the Hamilton Farm Storm System budget, that project hasn't been started yet. Once we account for the bond forfeiture, we'll be coming back in the fall with those updated numbers for you. In the Parked Impact Fee Fund, some good news is we received about 1.9 million in grants from the county, so those, that revenue and then those projects have been budgeted. Those funds will roll over to next year, council action will be required to do that in September, so you will see those rollovers. And we've received about eleven thousand six hundred miscellaneous grants. And as I had mentioned in previous board meetings, Finance has also gone back four years and reconciled all of the impact fees out to make sure they were recorded in the correct fund, so there's about sixteen thousand and change that needs to be transferred out to other funds just to make sure the funds are recorded in the correct fund. Storm Drain Impact is a simple one, it's just changing the type of fund from a special revenue to an enterprise fund, that was an auditor recommendation that I fully support, so no changes to revenue expenses on that. Road Impact Fee Fund, there's a couple of reimbursements that, the Wasatch one in particular had a provision that they would receive a certain amount each quarter, and then there was a catch-up. Thankfully, this agreement is now complete along with the Rose Canyon one, and then there's some impact fees that needed to be transferred to ensure they're in the right As I had mentioned, the Public Safety and Fire Impact Fee Funds are in a new fund now, so I've moved those funds from where they were being accounted for to this new fund. Capital Projects, some of this we've already talked about, so it will budget in that Animal Services Tenant Finish. One thing, the next item was actually in the Finance Department budget, so Finance had money to purchase new budgeting software. Speaking with the city manager, we thought it would be more appropriate to save those funds and put it towards a new ERP or a new financial system instead, which is the greater need, and that ERP will most likely have a budgeting component that's much better than what we have now. This is moving those funds from the Finance Department budget to Capital Projects, so they can be retained for that project when we are able to do it. In addition, between reimbursements and then interest we have earned on bond proceeds, there's a proposal to increase the Main Street Widening Budget by 1.2 million. In addition, a final one is a reimbursement for the Hidden Notes Backbone that we were required by the reimbursement agreement to complete since all of the work had been completed. In the Water Fund, one of the new things that wasn't discussed prior was, we have received the funds from the grant from the state of Utah for the Olympia Water Tank of a million dollars, we actually received those funds today, so this is budgeting that revenue and then the corresponding expense out. As we have discussed at the work meeting, there were some payroll adjustments that needed to occur due to some under-budgeting issues, and then bond interest expense wasn't budgeted correctly with the initial budget. In the Impact Fee Fund, it's a completion of the Autumn Crest reimbursement from Wasatch, once again, that was one that had some catch-up that needed to be done. In addition, it had quarterly mandatory payments, but that reimbursement is now complete. Stormwater Fund, I actually have some good news since the last time I spoke to you. One is, as Finance recalculated the administrative fees, we did discover we could reduce the fee that was being charged by the general fund to the Stormwater Fund, and as we discussed last time, the Hamilton Park reimbursement agreement actually came in less than what the agreement stated it would. So with those adjustments, it does essentially break even the Stormwater Fund for this year. It does, with that administrative fee cost reallocation, it does provide a little bit of relief next year also. So with that, quick overview, are there any questions for the public hearing?
Thank you, I think we all do. We got four more hours to go. Okay, at this point, we will open the public hearing. Antonio doesn't want to say anything. Okay, look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
On my favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's a real call, isn't it?
Nope, not yet, just for not to close the public hearing. Okay, look, any comment or look for a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution Number R32-2023, amending the fiscal year 2023 Herriman City Budget.
Second.
motion by Steve, second by Jared. Jared?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that motion carries. Item 10, Consent Agenda, please tell me we're not going to move anything off. Look for, Steve?
No comments, nothing.
Look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Steve?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, that motion carries. Got through that one. Mentioned previously, we are continuing item 11.1 to a future meeting. So we'll move on to item 11.2, Discussion and Consideration of an Ordinance Adopting a Proposed Rate of Tax and Leaving Taxes Upon All Real and Personal Property Within the City of Herriman, Utah.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the third tax rate discussion tonight, of course, the two other districts. I do want to go through this first sheet, it's exactly the same as the other two district meetings, however, I'm hoping there's some people listening, and I do want to give a little bit of background really quick. So the first one is the certified tax rate. So the first one is the certified tax rate is the rate of property tax that generates the same amount of revenues the previous year plus any new growth. So it doesn't include any inflationary increases or any increases because your property value goes up. I always like to use the example, if your property value's going up, your tax rate's actually going down to give the city the same amount of money it received the last, the past year. If the council decides they desire revenue in excess of what the certified tax rate generates, you have to go through a process called Tooth and Taxation. This has specific advertising requirements in a public hearing that will occur in August. And the county coordinates with us on those noticing requirements and then when we can have the hearing. Similar to what I presented in the safety enforcement area discussion, I do have a chart showing how much is quote unquote lost to inflation due to the property tax not having a built-in inflationary pressure trigger. So since 2019, the city's lost approximately a hundred and ninety thousand in revenue due to there being no inflationary increase. I do have some notes on here. So the average new growth that the city receives in revenue is about seventy, or sixty thousand, excuse me, which is about a seven percent increase a year. Of note, that is going down, especially as the development slows down. And overall, property tax only makes up four percent of the general fund revenue. Sales taxes, of course, are largest tax source, or our largest revenue source. With that being said, to delve in the numbers of the tax rates, so the certified tax rate is zero point zero 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 one nine four, which coincidentally is the same as last year. This will generate revenue of approximately nine hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. As you can see, I have it broken that out between the base amount and then what we received due to new growth within the city. And then below is a three-year history of the tax rate and then how much the city's received in revenue. The average tax for the average home within Harriman is approximately seventy-four dollars, using that five eighty-seven nine as an average amount. With that being said, I do want to just give a brief overview of where we're at with the budget. I know we've had many discussions on it. So we did start out with an initial deficit of one point two million. We have staff a number of budget proposals for the council for a future, for future consideration. One is using fund balance of eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand. This is the amount that's in excess of three months' reserve. I will be bringing to you in August a fund balance policy and that three months is the recommendation I'll have for you as the council to consider. Another one is not really well-known, but it is in the financial reports, is we have a city hall capital project fund, which I spoke with the previous finance director and there really wasn't clear direction on what that fund was intended for currently other than projects that are needed around city hall. I spoke with the city manager. Our feeling is if there's any major capital projects that need to occur in city hall, those really need to go through the normal CIP process and end up in the capital project fund. So the proposal would be to close that fund, which has a fund balance of approximately two hundred and thirteen thousand and use that to help offset this, the capital projects in the general fund. In addition, and we have previously discussed this, our legislative consulting line item is approximately fifteen, fifty thousand more than what we currently need with our current contracts. I know there's been discussion on if we'll continue those contracts or change them or that, but this fifty thousand is in excess of the current contracts we do have. We're also proposing as staff, for consideration, that we reduce the amount we give away as gifts or pri, it, the term, I hate the term swag, but that's the term that's usually used, reducing that by twenty thousand within the budget. Keeping all of that, this does also include paying for the crossing guards in the police department. We are able to balance the budget and keep the capital project list intact. With that being said, we have discussed this before, so it probably won't be new information is moving forward, we won't have as much ongoing revenue for capital projects, which will create some strains in, in a future year. I do also want to go over, not that we've discussed these, but I think it's good to just go over what reductions we've made as staff, as proposals. One would be to eliminate any new position that was being proposed in the fiscal year twenty-four budget. In addition, we have a accountant position that was vacant that we're proposing not filling and then a number of interns also we're not proposing filling. And the city has also made some budget-reducing initiatives or actions. One was we had a previous assistant city manager position that has been converted to a management analyst position. Of course, there's a change in duties with that. And we have proposed eliminating the economic development director position. And then at events, they have reduced their full-time equivalents by one and then another full-time equivalent was converted to part-time. So with that, are there any questions about the certified tax rate? Any, any other discussion or questions for me?
Did staff have a recommendation on this? Just hold the line?
It's such a small.
That's my fault.
Amount, I mean, I, I think, I don't think there's ever been an increase. I, I'm not aware of an increase since it started.
In twenty-two years.
So in twenty-two years, that rate has stayed the same. The challenge is to make it a significant part of the budget, not to say that a million dollars is not significant. It hurts if you have to take that away, but if you wanted to make it two million, you're doubling. That's, that's just a, it, it starts at such a low rate, I, I'm not sure it's worth the heartburn to try and make it significant.
And that's where I'm at, I just want to make sure that's.
And staff's recommendation would be to focus any potential tax increases with the safety enforcement area.
Okay. That's where I'm at.
Which I'll just comment that if, if you look at almost any other city, as far as I know, us in Riverton as when we left UPD and then subsequently UFFSA, we're the only ones that have created a separate taxing district for those entities. Most other cities fold those into their general tax rate and it's, I won't want to say hidden, but they're meshed together. So it, it's not as transparent, which is what our intent was by separating them. I would just beg anybody that's looking at this or paying attention, and I'll say this again as we have the, the other tax discussions, please look at your property tax and understand how it works. Your property tax does not go to the city. That's not, two-thirds of it is the county and the school district. And then public safety, that's really the only thing that we can kind of control. So.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we're all on the same page, or hold the line this year?
I guess I'll just put it this way. There, no increase would be of significant value. I mean, we could increase it ten percent and that doesn't, barely covers one FTE maybe. It's, but on the other hand, inflation is eroding the percentage of the general fund that that contributes to. And as sales tax increases, it's going to be even a smaller percentage. I think there's going to be a point in the future where even when it's, you know, with new growth, it's a million or maybe a million and a quarter or some, sometime in the, it's just.
Well, to give you an idea, seven years ago, right, they never changed the tax rate. Seven years ago, it was about five hundred. Right? So with the growth that we've had during that time, yeah, you'll, you'll see that. But proportionately, our plan is we're working hard to cultivate other revenue sources, right?
So we don't ever, so we don't have to do this. But I, I guess I would just point out, I don't, I don't think we should make any change, but I also think that we need to recognize that there are, this is just for one year's budget. As we look at future budgets and we look at some of the economic realities that we're going to be facing in terms of especially capital improvement projects, I mean, not to, not to scare anybody again, but if I remember right, there was four hundred million dollars or four hundred and fifty million dollars in capital projects that needed to be done between now and 2050. And based on our general fund capital improvement plan allocation with three point two million, so we should be able to get there in about a hundred and thirty years and we need to do it in twenty-seven. So I think we need to have a, you know, a real discussion with the residents about the fact that we're either going to have to have some not very good roads or there's going to have to be some additional tax revenue somewhere. So.
Shop local.
I think that Trent needs that arborist assistant so he can plant those money trees.
Yeah, plant money trees. And shop in Harriman, everybody, please. Spend your money in Harriman, it helps.
Okay, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance number two zero two-three-dash-one-two, adopting proposed tax rate and levying taxes upon all real and personal property within Harriman City, Utah.
Second.
Motion by Jared, second by Steve. Jared?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that motion carries. Okay, future meetings, next planning commission meeting next Wednesday at seven o'clock. Next council meeting, we do not meet again until July twelfth, as the week after that is town days. Events coming up, Hungary Harriman and Farmers Market on the nineteenth, as well as in the Park Harriman Live. Is it just the talent show this year? At least ten. And chalk art is Monday night. So a lot going on. So check your calendars for that for next week. It's going to be a week full of activities, Monday through Saturday, concluding with the big finale Friday. Friday, there's fireworks this year, a short show and then a Taylor Swift.
Swift, not Taylor Swift.
Swift.
Swift, a short, swift show.
A swift show. Swift fireworks show, six minutes. And I approved the list, I approved the song list of Taylor Swift. Can I not say that? Is that why you keep telling me I can't say that? I approved the song list.
Wow.
I don't take hints very well.
She has taken several people to court over that, so I'm just saying.
I'm karaoke-ing. I will be karaoke-ing. That's not good.
Can you shake, shake, shake there, man?
Okay, so look for, look there. Nobody, not even my wife wants to see that.
He doesn't, he didn't get that either.
Okay, so look at your calendars, a full week of activities next week. Look for a motion to go back to work meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.